Evening everyone, good evening cable. Welcome to the regular Board of Health meeting for Wednesday, April tenth, two thousand and nineteen. We call the meeting go order at six oh five. And if everyone wouldn't mind standing, pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everybody, you can sit down now. Any public input we have?
No public or public input. We'll move on to number four, old business, where we discuss an act draft title five inspector license application. Is this something newly created? Now this here says we have, is that not correct, is this an original?
No, that is our, that is our fee schedule for, yeah, so this is actually the application.
Okay.
A little ahead of ours, I'm sorry.
I think we discussed this once or twice before, and...
Matt made the revisions and sent it back, so that is incorporating the board's revisions to the first draft.
And this is the result of us, the new regulations have come, taken effect July first, that we're gonna be licensing our Title V inspectors.
And there were some of you guys holding off July first.
July first instead of January thirty first?
Yeah.
I mean, not January first yet, because there's a lot going on at the end of the calendar year, so...
Yeah, that's really tough.
And the only thing I, and I know we've talked about it before, and I picked up on it. Telephone. Should we have a business number and a, another different contact number, or just, do you think one number?
We can have that in.
It's a place. What office number and cellphone number?
Yeah, we can have that in, if we need that in.
Okay.
Yeah.
We use that as...
Yeah, because it may be, it may be just a, an individual that does a certified question by itself, or they may be working for a company.
Yep, we can have that in without a problem.
Yeah, office and stuff, and I have no other file on that. Yeah, who's it? Do we need a motion for it?
Yeah, I guess so.
Yeah, we should move to a...
We won't roll out to July first, but we'll send it out ahead of time, so people can get licensed.
So, Chairman, make a motion that we... This new certified system inspector license form with the change to add the business telephone number as well.
Okay. So I'll step down, I'll set the motion, more discussion for me. All fair, I, I pose. So I use, I view discussing act, Board of Health fee schedule. Which one we wanna talk about first, I have a lot of paper.
Okay, so this one. These are the items that when we were working on the regulations?
This one?
Yes. The board has said, okay, these are items that we think we might wanna add to our fee schedule.
Correct.
So the fee schedule at the moment is this one, this is what we have. And these are the items that we were talking of, you wanted to discuss the possibility of adding. For food and that, or their little Title V.
Yeah, we're talking, we're kind of mixed here. I think so they, the fees were incorporated, I think that's an old fee schedule, I think they were incorporated into this one, it starts with bakery.
Oh, you wanna show the business, it's small, this one right here? Maybe other, I have it.
If it was listed with a map, then it's...
Well, what Todd is saying, and I apologize, the shorter one you have in your writing right now, we've incorporated those into the fee schedule that starts with bakery. See like Hathaway now, it says sanitation, new construction repair, so we incorporated those into the fee schedule, it's just... No, that was my fault, I had...
So which one are we on?
Well, this is one of the things I think we should be doing, is separating our fees into one section for food, one for septic, one for animal control.
I agree with that.
Because they're just kinda mixed together.
Right now, I'm kinda mixed up.
It's a lot to look at, you're looking at food and cabinets.
Okay, so just gonna work off this one, you wanna just go down, I'll go, I'll read them off?
But these are the ones that you've talked about adding to it.
So we'll do this one first, and then we'll go to this page. It'd be good, I have a... Bakery? It's, it's, right now it's two hundred dollars. Yeah, a lot of these, I think. That has already been ordered, that put is in for...
The body art establishment is two hundred, and each additional artist practitioner will be one hundred. Cabin motel washroom, I don't know if we have that anymore.
I think it's, right now it's one hundred. Yeah, mine's still functioning, I'll probably buy it for...
Oh, good.
Yeah, we should have, you never know what it is. The catering license daily is fifty, but I just wanted to check.
Yeah, because what we have in there was pretty much a temp food permit instead of a catering license, so obviously, that's when people apply, they have to guide in the right direction.
But we did have a couple of questions, and we didn't know if we got temporary permit, we should break down any more. Because we have a couple of people, like this woman that cup K-pop.
The K-pop lady there would be...
Pop culture?
Yeah, pop culture.
That's a one day event, right?
Well, yeah, thirty-five dollars for that one day, and she comes with another, that's another thirty-five, just for what means, you know, for what she does and what we're inspecting, it seems a little steep to me, but...
As opposed to...
So you have to look at it like this. This is where I was at a bit of time. In free time, it's ten dollars, but if you, if you send out the inspector, you have to cover what's caught. So if it's thirty-five dollars, you cover each hour.
Right, so when we go down to food truck at, at one of these events?
North Country Auctions.
It's the same price as looking at...
K-pop.
And maybe that's normally how it is.
Yeah, I think it's fine, that's why, even this catering one, catering license daily, I guess wouldn't take long.
Yeah, it's always a matter of look at, maybe if we keep doing events for us.
There's a lot of, like, for supply, you have to watch that with the regular caterer.
So you point of the, of this person, maybe it's like two weekends, are you there or...
Well, that's one of the questions, there is a food truck that comes to North Country Auctions, and it was like, alright, he did the first one, it's thirty-five, the second one, now he's up to seventy, it's like, at what point does he get an annual license?
He should get an annual, that's official to him.
Well, that's just it, and it was a matter of how, you know, so he's, he was on the cusp of, do I do an annual license?
Well, you come to the auction once a month, that's right.
Hmm, I think they're every three months right now, but they're getting closer together, so, the summertime they do it more often.
It is the beginning they were changing, I think, till they found someone they really liked.
Yeah, they switch food trucks every time.
Just, just say, just say it was an event where, over the weekend, most of you hold it over the weekend. And you've already kinda matched our schedule, but maybe none of us can make it, just for some hard reason, and you have to go, and you say, hey, I went out, how does that work? At least we know you, we're able to cover you for that hour.
Yeah, but inspecting a food truck for thirty-five dollars, to me, is, is a reasonable expectation. But like I say, pop culture, and there was another one that sold at, what was the fair, at Arujos, there, we went up and down that.
Yarx Festival?
Yarx Festival, there was somebody in there selling, I forget what it was, but it was like all the beverage stuff, and it was like, alright, there's nothing on coolers, it was just a very, you know, so...
What about a two-day event, I don't think we had a charge really.
Well, like couch chip works, the whole weekend is Friday, Saturday, Sunday, it's, at the moment, thirty-five dollars for the whole weekend.
Or you do, like, do thirty-five dollars your first day, and then, you know, fifteen dollars every day thereafter for maximum of X amount of days.
Is that as usual? In a year or in a row?
In a row, consecutive days. If they do, say, Saturday, Sunday, then the following week when they come back, another Saturday, Sunday, you're looking at thirty-five, plus whatever that second day is, another thirty-five for the second day. Because in theory, your first inspection is gonna be longer than if you go back the second day and get it again. Because your first inspection on a temporary event, say it's a truck, say it, or whatever, the couch chip, it's gonna take longer, so you gotta make sure that the hot water, and half the time, the hot water's not working right, you know, the refrigeration may not be fully up and running yet, you gotta hang around, you gotta wait, you know, the second day, they're already running, they're operating, and everything was good from the beginning, before you're going back to check in, you know, so, I know most towns, I think, will do a reduced rate for a second day. Consecutive, you know, you could say up to five consecutive days, or...
It's really complicated that law.
Well, no, you just wanna make thirty-five dollars for the first day, and twenty dollars for the second consecutive, second and third consecutive day, or each consecutive day, whatever.
Each consecutive day thereafter, up to...
Yeah, fifteen dollars.
Generally, it was seven or ten days. It all depends on the town.
Yeah, it could be like a whole weekend event.
We had a fair, so we went up to ten days.
If you go in the suburbs, you might as well see an annual permit at that point, so, yeah.
Sorry, I'd like to party, is there a reason why we still have a catering license for, at least a daily?
Well, it's said, no, we haven't been doing that.
Because catering, they don't necessarily have to get a permit from the town, because if someone's coming into catering event, they're supposed to notify the Board of Health that they're a year old.
I think if they're going to a four days, if it's a, it's a regular home, that's different.
Right, and that, that would be a catering license for the year, as a, you know, so, I think that could just...
So you wanna stretch the daily and just give them a yearly?
Correct.
Yeah, if you're trying to make more sense, because they can do other events.
Right, like I said, a caterer for a private event, they don't...
Something for supply, where we usually run it long, so...
Then they can just get temporary.
Event is temporary.
Yeah.
Somewhere on these events, we have to work in weekend inspections. I know most of them are on weekends, but...
Most of them are, yeah.
I pay a separate schedule for my...
And other things that happens. You know, you went out this past weekend, so... Was it this past weekend or a weekend?
I think it was the weekend before.
So you have a different fee schedule for the weekends, Jim?
It, I do, to a certain point. I have a Sunday and an overnight inspection day. So if they call in the middle of the night, they get paid differently.
Your inspectors do?
My inspectors do, yes.
But emergencies do not get charged.
Monday through Saturday, it's all the same rate, during normal working hours, Sundays, and nighttime inspections are a different rate.
Yeah, that'll kind of, be tougher on us, I think.
We do have a lot of Sunday.
So my, my suggestion to help Todd, or whoever's gonna be inspected with a schedule, you can make it that any temporary permit must be submitted in conclusion fourteen days prior to the event, seven days prior to the event. That way, it helps, if Todd needs to change his hours, or get a...
Or give somebody to cover it, right?
Todd can go out, we have plenty of time to work our schedules and make sure that that event is covered.
It might be waiting, leave early one day.
Well, that's what I've been doing so far, to adjust for it.
I don't think it's right that someone walks in at four fifteen on Thursday afternoon and says, oh, by the way, tomorrow night I'm doing a, you know...
Well, we tell them, the permit must be assigned by the Board members, and we can't get it assigned, that's all, so, that's what we've been doing, it seems to be working out alright, we haven't had too many issues with that. We usually know it's coming, we might not get the paperwork until a few days before, but we know the event is there, so...
If it gets to be a problem, you can certainly address that.
Oh, did we find out anything, is it thirty-five dollars still, or...
I think doing five is something you need, or, plus whatever...
For the first day.
For that, extra days.
Twenty? Yeah.
For this, for additional days?
Consecutive days, yeah.
Moving along, food service permit daily is one twenty-five.
A while back, I said that we should change, we should split, um...
I think we did, we did, we did have seven five.
Okay, yeah, 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 alright, so let me make sure that we split that, okay.
Now, this is farm permit, you should actually do barn permit, I think.
Which?
Yes.
We have stable down the bottom.
Okay.
That was for, you had chickens in the backyard or something, that was, it just covers Stacy's brick residence.
Farmer's market is twenty-five dollars.
Currently, we don't have any farmer's markets.
And, you know, farmer's market are exempt now. Right? From the food code, however, if they're doing other stuff aside, so it's, so if, we can keep that, if, if they are doing anything except for cut.
Like the frozen chicken.
If they're cutting vegetables, and they're doing other stuff, so if it's just regular vegetables, they're exempt.
As soon as they cut it?
As soon as they're cutting using refrigeration, and anything that has packaged foods, they can do still the honey and all that stuff.
So you're saying that farmer's market permit is only for beyond just selling?
Beyond the, beyond the regular definition of what's in the food code. So if somebody had just a regular honey, pure honey, they're off limits, but once they have something that they add it to the honey, then that, that becomes different. Same thing if they're gonna cut any vegetables, if they have any, like Crystal Haggie has, that packaged...
Chicken?
Yeah, chickens, and they actually have a freezer with meat, that's different.
This spring show, we have had a company that came in that wants to sell seafood.
Coming out of Maine.
So, you wanna read your farmer's market?
Fish, other than company name?
Sunshine, oh, is it? Because it has the season here, May fifteenth, October fifteenth.
What are we looking at, sorry?
Farmer's market.
Yeah, I don't know why the season date would be in there, I guess, unless it's...
Because that's where the fresh vegetables is.
It's generally the...
Yeah, that's what we talked about.
Was this in regards to the trailer?
I guess you could just keep it as...
You could always do May first, or October third first, or something like that, I mean, before, after that.
Punk gets up to Halloween usually, right?
Yeah, but they wouldn't give it.
Yes. I have a question for Kevin, this is about...
Yeah.
You said farmer's markets are exempt, so that...
Because we didn't, we didn't, yeah.
That means they don't have any involvement with the Board of Health, there's no, there are no inspections?
Yeah, we're, we're not required to do the inspection unless they change the scope, so if they're just, if it's purely...
Fresh vegetables.
Fresh vegetables, uncut, they're, they're supposed to be off limits, unless you, the local Board of Health, adopt stringent regulations. I didn't try to pursue that, because everybody knows that they give themselves something when they pull up on it. However, once you cut it, once you sell something different, you have jaws or whatever, it's strictly, it's, no, it's different.
Okay.
It's listed as, because I think in the food code, it was probably about a half dozen, maybe eight different items that you can...
They also wanted us to do away with that retail stuff, with everything that was prepackaged, it didn't need a refrigeration, but we've adopted, we, we decided to be more stringent on that. We left the farmer's law, I, I left the farmer's market law.
Okay.
You know, and they, and they know this, right, the people that own the farmer's market. It's gonna be pretty tough to monitor whether or not...
Well, we're gonna hear about it, if a farmer's market's coming to town, we're gonna know about it, you know, we're gonna have to advertise it, so we'll see it, and then we can ask them about it.
Wasn't DeRozier at one time, thinking about doing that, or talking about?
Yes, he was, too, yes. Yeah, just keep it as farmer's market, in case they don't believe, it's still twenty-five dollars, yeah, okay. Um, I think we already did the food service permit for the yearly, it was one twenty-five? Illegal dumping, to be determined. If, if it's illegal dumping for anything, for our nuisances. Yeah, if it's part of us, we have our nuisances for, if they just drop the couch or whatever, we have the one hundred, two hundred.
So we should say, you should say refer to, someone consider it, right?
Yeah, violence, two hundred, violence, I think, no. The one hundred, two hundred, depends on what you're dumping, that's the thing, so...
Maybe that's why it's to be determined.
Something hazardous that's gonna be...
It's hazardous because BP and whatever.
But it doesn't get involved, so...
It's somebody that dumps a couch out there, whatever it is, and we just start to charge them one dollar a time, yeah?
It's under, it's under the violence.
So that's why to be determined is why it's there, because it could be...
You could simply put the mash on a lot of...
You can just strike it all together.
I can do that.
I think so, I think so, yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
From, from the...
Yeah, that makes sense.
Strike all of it?
Yeah. That makes sense.
Lantern sticker should be transfer station sticker. I find it weird that the daily stick is the same price as the yearly sticker, but...
Hmm, that's because, it, I think it's still that way, um, so you, you need a truck, you know, a truck, a borrow, friend's truck, or whatever, it's a one-time, and that's it.
That's a good point, okay, makes sense.
Because the yearly is, they, it's very clear, it's direct, it's all, and you actually had, your registration, and already got the sticker.
Now they've said that, that makes sense. I think, I think our sticker is lower than any other, I don't know.
Yeah, part of it's like thirty-five.
But you do all your traction, that's...
Yeah, we have to make our traction, so... We pay all fifty bucks for the traction.
We go on, I guess. How many people have, they love to pay for that, so...
Yeah, we took lots of...
Milk cream only, I thought the... I thought the state said you couldn't charge more than ten dollars for that license, but...
Milk and cream?
Yeah, like, can't miss, I would...
I'm pretty sure it was in that, yeah.
That's what I thought it was, the state, yeah, milk is...
That's what we tried to defend, say ten dollars.
Yeah, there's a couple of states that's a...
Right, because they control the price of milk, the government's involved in that stuff, so...
Pretty sure the government, there's a max of ten.
Should we be using mobile with that, I mean?
Yeah. Mobile.
What's the...
What are we doing, mobile unit?
Yeah, food trucks.
Oh, so this is where you're writing it?
Is that what it is?
Is that what mobile unit is?
Are we talking about mobile?
This is trailer?
Usually, it's a temporary permit.
Jim has a clarification.
So, are zoning prohibits trailers for long-term use?
You just have to like fire it ten times, or you have to...
I don't know anywhere where this would be applicable, unless you're talking about...
Mobile food.
Existing, are you talking about mobile trucks or mobile carts, is that what you're talking about?
That's what we're trying to figure out.
It's been here three years.
Are we talking fanteen trucks?
That's what we're...
But that would make sense, it's a max five-month permit.
Okay, if I remember right?
So, like, say the auction, you're looking down there, and you got a truck down there, and...
Baseball conference, that's where this, and I don't know mobile trailer, mobile unit, but I remember the five months, because it was the baseball season, when we were trying to figure out how you were charging them temporarily, it wasn't a year, so it's a long name, it should be...
Say mobile food.
Mobile food.
But it's not really mobile, it's...
Then why don't we just make it like a hundred dollars a whole year, we got it?
We have the mobile food, we have the Paul Caitlin.
Yep, um, routine has, we have three of them.
Yeah, what do we charge?
One twenty-five.
So, do we charge many of them that have? So that's it, one twenty-five for all?
So do we wanna strike that max five-month permit thing, then?
I would just take away that one, yeah.
Yeah, so call it a mobile food truck.
Yeah, it's a yearly.
What about, does that include an ice cream truck for the year? It would, right?
Maybe that's why we're... This is the one that, huh?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, yeah.
All ice creams, I guess, all of them.
Not that strong, I did it for us.
You don't see it with much anymore, it's good.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of routes to go through, man.
If somebody wanted to do an ice cream truck, they could always come here and say, hey, let's, you know, ask for B W wage, but I guess if you show up with a mobile...
They can do it temporary.
For a car show, when somebody shows up, right, it's just a temporary permit for the day, it's if they wanna be there for the year, then they would just pay for the year's fee.
And, and, two, I have some question, you mentioned the ball field, so do you classify the ball field under this heading as well? Because they're not mobile.
No, that's what I was saying, they're not, but I remember a couple of years ago, that they changed the fee because it was seasonal. This is, that's the only one here that has anything to do with seasonal, I think.
Well, my point is, you know, I don't want to complicate this, if you could piggyback on the establishment, like the ball field, and the mobile units, with the one heading, and then just put a seasonal fee and an annual fee, that'll take care of it.
That would be...
Yeah, we can get a nice contract that covers the seasonal, ball fields in the seasonal.
Right.
I like that, because we have, we have lopes field, and you might have somebody that comes in and wants to do an ice cream truck, or whatever.
Right, and I know there are a few businesses in town that make use of food trucks, you know, in the summertime, as long as they get permission to be where it's supposed to be at. So that could be a seasonal, if it's only a few months during the summer, you know?
So then, you do that, so I would just put it as mobile food, and go over, and have one twenty-five for the yearly, and we had seventy-five to seventy-five.
Because baseball field's not more than...
Seasonal, there'd be seasonal, it's seventy-five.
So why don't we just go food service for a day, a season, and a year, and just make it food service, whether it's a food truck, or a temporary, or...
No, actually...
Get rid of all of them.
Get rid of all of them.
So what is it?
I just wanna say, for food service permit, you have a daily, a seasonal, and a yearly, so three different fees for food service permit.
Is that all the same process, regardless of what it is?
Same application, regardless of food truck or not, because that's what we're doing now, is food trucks are getting temporary permits anyway, because it's thirty-five dollars.
We have one that has a yearly one.
Yes, well, he, he hasn't done it yet, and it's going to be...
Paul Caitlin doesn't have a yearly?
He has a yearly, I think.
Oh, yeah, he doesn't, sorry, I'm thinking...
And Bob can tell you, Zeke's catering.
Yeah, they have a yearly.
Yeah.
But it's one, but it's one twenty-five for both, right?
I guess when you write up their permit, you just write food service slash mobile, and you write up this.
Okay.
So what would be the seasonal fee?
I'd probably keep the temporary separate from the others, because it's a whole different...
Right, so temporary, seasonal, and yearly, so, are we...
Yeah, seasonal seventy-five, right?
Yeah.
And temporary staying at thirty-five?
We're getting all mobile.
Yeah.
Sorry, seventy, seventy-five on mobile. And yearly staying at one twenty-five?
It's still July thirty-first? I'm gonna keep that.
I think the mobile catering trucks, so to speak?
That's why I'm...
I wanna say, yeah, Cal, it's December.
Yeah.
Well...
The seasonal, they're gonna come in, it's gonna be the summer season, so...
It's yearly, because the one has a table.
So our food permits are coming up for review?
Seasonal, you can't put an expiration, they'll tell you when you can start.
Could be a right to season, right?
Because I have a, I have a place that just sells hot dogs in November, and they decided to close from November, so we get there, the permit actually says from here to here.
You can just define seasonal as five months, or whatever you so choose.
We can define seasonal, we just leave it open, because you're gonna write the expiration, they're gonna write on the application from when to when.
Right, but the yearly one right now expires July thirty-first.
But you don't, but you don't want, if someone coming in, say, I'm gonna go from February to October.
Oh, that's when you, that's when we reviewed it, yeah, yeah.
And then that thing lasts for a month.
We reviewed that, yeah. Well, you don't have to define this, it's just we have the end of the season, whether it's from October to March, so we could sell hot dogs and hot chocolate.
Yeah, but you said it was the other way, they wanna sell February through December, and they're only closed for January, they could say...
Right, well, you need to go to maximum and think, oh, what's seasonal, is it five months or?
We have a five month season right now, it doesn't really define.
Okay.
When it begins or ends, but it can only be five.
Any five months, any five months. That makes, that makes sense.
So five month maximum off each one?
Mm-hmm.
Right, so back to when they're going to expire, obviously the five month one is gonna be different, so the yearly is gonna stay.
What do you have it on?
July first.
I would just keep it.
No, July thirty first. Seven thirty one.
Oh, okay.
I would just keep it on, but how you guys?
Yeah, it's, you go per month.
Yeah, that would be a name.
Round up.
Yeah. Okay, uh, are we on preparation test?
I guess so.
Yeah. So here two hundred, you all from two, so it's two hundred and each additional hole is seventy five.
No, I think that, um, for repairs, if you have two holes, one perk, for new construction, four holes, two perks, new construction sometimes takes a little bit longer, we just can't do cives and all the rest of it, so I think perk test for new construction should be like four hundred dollars, but.
That's generally, well, I think a lot of times they split it up and have new construction, new construction, right, obviously we're getting up previous things like that, or a basic repair, usually it's like probably two hundred dollars is generally what I see for a repair for new. Regardless of how much time or how many holes.
More work is into prepping for new construction, so.
Right.
Additional hole? I've seen all, all the times, they give fifty a hole.
I wouldn't even, I mean, two hundred for a repair, four hundred for new, call even, I mean, that, that way it's, you know, it's paid upfront, you're not trying to backtrack, oh, Julie owes more money.
Yeah, how do you get the money?
Right.
Isn't that addressed on the road, or it says sanitation, new construction?
That's the permit.
Okay.
Perk test.
And so we want to wipe out the seventy five hundred dollars in additional hole?
Yeah, and I would do perk test, repair. And perk test new.
Now, I'm gonna ask later when we get into reviewing the plans, but I'll throw it in here, if you're over two thousand gallons a day, you need additional holes, additional perks, and you need obviously more reviewing, because you're pressuring that something involved with it too, so I was gonna suggest for the fee for the permit, if it was over two thousand gallons a day, it should be more money. But if it's over two thousand. Right, it should be, it doesn't.
For review.
For review, but then again, for the perks, you now need to do three perks instead of two. So it'd take longer. So I think the system will.
But you gotta, you gotta think about it, it takes longer, but sometimes you go to a perk and it takes ten minutes, but sometimes you go to a perk, you have to take, you're, you're watching the water, and it takes five hours, whatever, it's four hours. And you, it was still repaired for two hundred, but it really depends, yeah, if they're digging more, it doesn't really matter.
One or off site.
I did a repair, it was eighty six minutes an inch.
If you, if you're gonna charge them two hundred, you could be there all day.
Less than two.
Or you could be there for five minutes.
Well, unless you're charged by the hour, and you say it's, but then you ain't even go back now.
I, I think it's the law of averages at that rate.
Once you, once you allocate that time for a perk, you, until you're done, man, I just wouldn't recommend on a day that you. Like, I don't go on Fridays, but then you get twelve, makes sense, in case it ran over, so if you're open from that time to that time, you're gonna end up finishing the perk.
That extra full fee, we've implemented that quite a bit, and I'm not sure in what circumstances, but if you look at your old. That's been on there forever, it's not like you guys just added that.
I think, I think.
So that's an additional perk test on each additional people?
I think the only time I've done that is for the additional hole is when I've actually had to go, go out and do a soil eval for somebody, well, have their, then I have to observe it, that's when we charge them that seventy five. Or whatever, that's fifty.
So again, you're into a perk test, and then, right, not just looking at holes, there's four holes, and you say, go dig one more, I mean.
Well, don't you, didn't you say in your, let's go back to this real quick, this is here, the board reserves the right to request a soil eval as part of the total five inspection. That one would be charged with the additional hole, you go out there, you'd be charging that seventy five.
For just the one?
For the one hole, you go look at.
Then I would put, um. Uh, groundwater.
Observation.
Observation hole, maybe separate.
And, and I think it should be less than seventy five.
I've had, I've had times too where there might have been some kind of inconsistency or whatever, and I've said, hey, I wanna extra hole, a time of excavation, you know, you're already in there, state, then you'd be, all right, you know what, it's a little more time for you, so I'd do like an observation hole for seventy five.
Actually, that is a suggestive.
Oh, yeah, we got a lot of papers, huh?
Okay, so. So you wanna put that on the preparation test, observation hole?
So there should be two on the perk test, repair, two hundred, new for four, observational seventy five. Like it?
Thank you.
So you don't want to bring anything in for over two thousand gallons a day, cause that's three perks now, so.
I would do that under.
Or do you wanna say additional perk tests are, no?
I would, I would. We get down to, um, the permits.
Put it on the permit fee, okay, got you.
You have a permit fee, repair, and new for residential, the permit fee for commercial, new and repair. Because regardless, your commercial systems are gonna be more complex than your residential, so it's gonna require more review, no time in the field, that's how I would split that.
Okay.
That kinda covers some of the extra perk test time on a commercial. Um, or, I, I was, I'm other than some of these couple of random shared.
Yeah, no, there's, there's always exceptions to every rule, but needs to get it together.
You could also put, um, I don't know, you can do it now, under the perk test, it's two hundred repair for the day, new construction four hundred for the day. You know, so that way, hey, it's new construction, we're gonna be on, you know. Or you could do per lot, you know, I, I don't, I don't, I just don't want someone coming in doing a subdivision and saying, oh, it's new construction perk, we're doing four hundred bucks, and I'm getting.
So four hundred dollars per lot.
Yeah, I'm getting the whole, the whole subdivision perk for four hundred bucks, that's the deal, you know, so I would, yeah, per lot, I think that's.
You wanna just, since we already have this stuff, you wanna just stay on, on interviewing stuff?
You mean jump ahead?
Well, we're already talking about this stuff, and not, because we're not gonna go pools soon.
Yes, it's all.
Might as well just stay. Up and down.
They're up and down, right?
Okay.
But we'd like to break them down into, yeah, food service.
Okay, sorry, so pool, non-residential, that's one hundred. I think it decided that was good.
Can't figure that out?
Recreation camp. Now you might have time to get a seasonal recreational camp. What are we doing that, what are we doing?
Soccer camp, yeah, most of them are.
All paperwork is the same.
Yeah. They run for a week a lot of times, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, re-inspections, hall violations, fifty, makes sense.
That's the, um, I'll give you on.
Yeah, I, well, I looked at, I looked at, uh, Freetown, Bradenham. Lakewood, Rockford.
Should be less than an hour to go back for a re-inspection.
Yeah, so it covers the hour, covers the inspection.
Beyond, but long will be reasonable for, you know, inspect, absolutely, full re-inspection, you go, yeah, your final, your first one should be, I'm not, after that, I would charge it, you just build it to the next permit, so.
Uh, no, I usually just send them an invoice, I'm like, up until now, the violations, they've sent it.
You don't have to put, you could just put re-inspections.
I, I was gonna suggest that.
And, yeah, there's not always violations, I guess.
There's not always a violation, because the guy could be missing whatever it is or whatever.
It's.
Just re-inspections, I agree.
For all items.
Yeah.
For the inspection.
Residential kitchens.
That's pretty good.
Seventy five. Retail store permit. And that, we just don't make school, school service related, that was seventy five, makes sense, I think. Sanitation, new construction, four hundred.
Uh, I think you should probably actually specify like permit, disposal works permit instead of sanitation, just odd.
Yeah, and that, just, can you record, that's, it should say includes inspections. Obviously, they know what they get, time review and includes inspections. That's the whole, all the way, right?
Mm-hmm.
It includes.
So, time review, it has to put the, the fireworks, they three.
Yeah, whatever are minimum.
Wait, no, it's two, but it's going to be three.
Yeah.
It has to include what we, we, we adopted.
But your re-inspection fee as a whole now won't include, hey, you know what, what are you doing, you mean, you told me you were all set, now here, you listen to.
That's when you charge them the fifteen.
It feels a mess, you know, now you can go back and charge it fifteen. So that.
So it's time review and three inspections. Whatever we adopt.
Three.
Yeah.
So you, the idea here of the residential repair, residential, new, commercial repair, commercial new.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I think for, we'll change, strike sanitation, we'll say disposal works permit, residential new construction, four hundred. Disposal works permit, residential repair is two hundred. Um, and then, you know, disposal works permit, commercial, new, disposal works permit, commercial repair, whatever you choose, and it should be pretty substantially more than residential because there was. Usually once you get into the commercials, different holding tanks, free straps, things like that, it's kind of a labor system, probably not counting.
And, and I've seen it, well, I'll use it exactly, like, was actually seven twenty.
I was gonna say six hundred for new, but.
Yeah, so I was gonna say just bump.
Like three hundred.
Six hundred on a repair, six hundred on new.
That's one, clear, right?
So residential's staying the same, this, you're talking commercial at the moment?
Unless you just wanna do commercial as a blanket, whether it's new or repair.
Yeah, yeah, is it still gonna be over the?
There's still a lot of work, but it's, yeah, there, if you go, it should be less work for repair, cause you can't adjust certain things. And now I'm gonna throw a Hunter's Hill, we're putting in one five thousand gallon a day system for thirty two ounces, so what's that fee? Is it per lot, so what if they're tiny, thirty two ounces, thirty two pounds, four hundred?
It's the one system.
So four hundred dollars.
Well, they do for lots up there.
Well, no, it's residential.
A Hunter's Hill. Is it each house or each dwelling is a lot, or?
Yes, so, yeah, and each, on that specific one, each house has a tank and pump, in addition to the shared field.
So you're gonna have to, you're gonna have a inspection for each of the tanks and pumps.
Yep.
I mean, really, it should be.
And that would be four hundred dollars.
Brading is fifty.
Right, right now we're gonna be charging fifty.
It's a water health inspection fee.
Unless we do one just for tanks.
A water health connection.
We do one just for tanks.
But now we're gonna have final breaking too.
Here's an idea, just, just throwing it out there, cause if you try to pull every single thing into one P schedule, it's impossible.
Yeah.
Maybe you should have a disclaimer on the bottom, this, uh, shared, common, large commercial systems, determined at the time of project approval. When the planning board gets the project, or the zoning board of appeals gets the project, they even get site planner view for commercial. You, you can get that, and then this board can convene and come up with a fee, that's appropriate. Just a suggestion.
So we can save less than two thousand gallons a day for all four of those, over two thousand gallons a day is fee to be determined by the board.
Yeah. Yeah, because, I mean, it's, it's almost impossible, like, with Hunter's Hill, he's got a tank inspection, a pump inspection, you got the field you gotta look at, there's tanks, you hope so, there, by the way, too.
Right.
So, you know, it just gets, and then you look at, um, Sunny's Way, it's all sewer connections, and then it goes to, uh, the pump station. Titan Woods is yet a different one, they're all different.
So why did you word that to me, a common, shared, or large systems will be?
Determined at the time of project approval.
Personally, I think you should say four hundred dollars a lot, but.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking more like, if you have one that's a tank inspection.
Really, right on.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Well, did you say, say Hunter's Hill, you said four hundred a lot, and that included inspecting the tank, the pump chamber, the final rating for those two, and the whole shared system part, now that four hundred makes sense, because now you're getting the piece.
We only wanna look at that.
Maybe you do that, but how about you get.
You could, you could also put it under as, um.
Tank inspection, you wanna look at your tank.
You definitely.
What do you do for, what do you do for Titan Woods, which is just a connection fee, just a connection, there's no infrastructure on the lot.
Fifty dollars.
Yeah, just a fifty dollars for an inspection, right?
But then how do you, how do you price the subject part of it?
Right, except if we have sewer at that point, right, the, the inspection on the lot is a sewer connection.
So you can do a component slash port and or abandonment, so, say it'd be a hundred dollars, whether it's a tank, abandonment. Sewer time, de-box, and that, then you could say, hey, look, Hunter's Hill, you know what, where, and you could say disposal works, commercial. Slash shared slash common system, so you're gonna get a little more upfront, because it's a large system, and then you could say each additional tiny component is going to be a hundred dollars, so you got a tank each house, hundred bucks.
A tank and a pump?
Two hundred, two hundred dollars.
That makes sense.
Just, you're splitting the gun metal, it's a little more reasonable for them.
And, and you're kinda putting a blanket over components and abandon.
So what do you do for the actual system?
Six hundred. Or whatever you choose.
So you'd like six hundred dollars plus a hundred dollars per component?
Correct.
So each wall would then be the two one, uh, a hundred, two hundred or whatever, is reach connections, a hundred, I guess.
Okay, that simplifies it.
Because in that way, you're not, I don't think you're overcharging, you know, you, it's still, there's time to go out. And check to make sure the tank and pump and everything's all placed in final branding, but I'm gonna charge four hundred for that, that's low. And your main system, you're gonna get on the, you know, it's five thousand dollars per day, so, you know, the commercial rate is a little better, if you wanna go higher than the six hundred, that's.
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, yeah, see, we, when we talk about it, it works, it does.
The planning is a, yeah, it's more expensive.
Are you okay with leaving six hundred dollars for the two, or are we paying for commercial, shared, common system?
Yeah. That, that's a good one, okay. Uh. Which one? Sanitation inspection, each additional, is it the?
We get rid of that, basically.
Better than that, you gotta fix your, huh, and on, on the bigger systems, I mean, you have to go down to some, several times, more than what would be, you know, I mean.
Right, that's.
That's a separate, yeah, yeah, definitely, I'm just using Hunter's Hill for example, and say one.
Well, so we're not allowed ones coming down the pipe of work in the perks, so.
Right.
So if they call it, one hundred per truck? Sewer inspections?
Sewer connection on the sewer, we're talking about?
Yeah.
That would go with the abandonment, they wouldn't.
I'm not breaking that.
What you, we were charging on Titan Woods, if it's a sewer connection, was.
Why is it called sewer connection?
Yes. Well, on the lot, it's just a building sewer, and then it's going into the shared system, so it's, but it's, it's not the sewer department that's fixing, because it's a shared system.
Right.
Component?
Component.
That's part of the component, right?
So we can scratch, or?
I mean, your, your sewer line into the house, that's a, that's a component, if you're.
Well, it's the wall out.
Right, so if you go to Hunter's Hill, you have the building sewer, the tank and the pump chamber, it's three hundred, you know what I mean, that, that's, that are you getting?
I would just, I mean.
We have to apply a little conversation.
Yeah, I would, I would just do the two tanks.
I understand.
So am I getting rid of sewer inspection, or we're changing it to connection?
I'll just get rid of it, and just apply the, the component, that's my opinion, just apply the component section.
Somewhere around here, I think we should define what those components are.
I think it's define the type five, is it?
Well, for the, well, the average person knows this, I mean, the average person doesn't know this.
Let me put it right this way.
Yeah, you can.
It must, right now, it's quick, uh, tank, de-box, pump?
Pump, any, any kind of? Connection?
We're building sewer connecting to a shared system, there you go, that'll cover it.
You say de-box, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I mean, then you can get into your automated distribution valves and the grease traps, and, you know, there's a whole lot of factors that you could.
You say, you say tank, it covers, you say tanks.
Tank, covers regardless, whether it's a grease trap or.
It's a mouth pass, hey, that's. But that's only on shared systems.
Well, that's what we're talking about, it's a basic system too, so, well, no, I guess it's a matter when it comes to, like, good to, so.
I almost, remember we were looking at. I almost remember we were looking at title five about the de-box not being part of the ESAS.
Correct.
Decided we're getting the boy then, I mean, if where.
That is making it a separate component from the ESAS, yes. And we added the rating that says you have to have twelve inches of cover over the distribution box, because that wasn't specifically spelled out in title five, so. Should be good one.
You wanna add a filter to the component, because you're altering the actual system. If I couldn't T, you're cutting a pipe out, put a filter in.
If you have a tank, but if you're putting in a tank and a filter, it's just one, because if you're only installing.
Right, but say you have one of the older tanks, for our thing, just that way it forces something to get a permit. That way we're just not hacking something apart and not getting inspection, and we don't know about it, and next thing you know, there's sewage leaking out because it wasn't properly installed on it.
We can work something out for that. And then obviously we have to close it back by you guys before we. We're on A plus, so we're okay. Stable, easy.
Yeah. Ten, or ninety?
You have a stable business, Tom. Fifteen? Is there a difference?
Like the species.
But it's personal, or do I need boarding?
Stacy couldn't be here tonight, but she does have um animal control officer fee schedule that we're incorporating this into, you know. Housing the dog overnight just for a few hours.
Standing established is a hundred, twenty five dollars each of the devices. Tobacco permit, one twenty five. And a well connect.
All right.
Is one fifty. So we have to discuss that in future too, because we're requiring a welcome, and we're probably wanna know what the yield is. And they're gonna come back with a water analysis, right?
Well, we've got all that on the well permit application, and I think that's our.
And I won't issue a building permit without all that information, I submit it, so.
We need to go back up to disposal works permits, uh revision.
Oh, yeah.
I totally have no issue with, you know, one revision being included part of the price. Everybody makes some errors, typos, oh, you know, I missed that grade or something, that I have no issue with. But I've sent plans back four, five, six, ten times, and it's ridiculous, it's a lot of time reviewing, looking at it, back and forth with the engineer. So uh I definitely suggest.
Seventy five, hold it seventy five?
Yeah.
That's what we've been charging, so.
What was it, seventy five?
Can you see down at the bottom, we get some asterisks there?
And the first ones.
The second one, wait, all food related rights, just commits, improve one inspection, two inspection, right?
Two, right, no, two.
Two.
And your.
Box there. Which one do you want now, suggested ones?
Yeah.
No, I have one, but I think we turned it into this. Yeah, so the community septic government program is an application that we have to review and make sure the taxes are paid and all the rest of it, and it takes some time to process. And a lot of people come in and look, yeah, come in and just looking for it, when it's like they're like just dumping it on us kinda thing.
I definitely think there should be a fee, but I personally.
I disagree.
I can agree.
I disagree, so.
Well, you didn't do it, yeah, and first, we all, we just, we go first, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
If we're gonna already charge, if we're gonna get five percent, and we're in the office already, and it's a service that we're providing. You don't have to charge extra for a service you're providing, right? You don't come in and say, can you get that from my file, do this? You don't say, well, I have, I'm doing a lecture today, it's it's part of, part of the process, I think. Not not to say it's not a lot of work, it is a lot of work, they have to submit it, and but it is, it is, we're offering it as part, we're offering the service. So we shouldn't charge extra.
I would. The application fee, I'll meet you in the middle of that, if you don't wanna charge that. The early payoff penalty definitely needs to be in place in years of life. So one, you get a lot of people that are selling their house, or gee, you know what, I don't wanna, you know, go to the bank, try and get money, or I don't wanna take money out, replace my stuff, but. I'll go with this, it can be paid off once they get the money out of town, I don't have to pay to take the money out, I don't have to do anything. So they take money away from people that truly need it, flip, flip their house, pay off the loan, six months later, a year later, that money's gone.
Or a month later.
Exactly.
So that five percent fee, we never earn the month.
We never get that back.
That's a rare occasion, you know.
It's happened twice in the last.
Out of five, yeah.
What, nothing?
I know a community that stopped doing it because of that.
Yeah.
Well, the thing is, the fuel guard, like, another ton of work, they just asked for the extra money, we had, we asked up to a million dollars, and they, and they said, sure, no problem. That money's just.
No, no, I I would agree that I would get rid of the application fee, but it needs to pay off in less than six months, it needs to be.
I was originally talking about the application fee, but you, that's a good point, but it was a lot of time, the mistake in in the beginning.
Right, so if we, if they pay it off in a month, we didn't earn the five percent, we earned.
We got nothing.
That that makes sense, so.
So I think one or the other, or both, but.
So what would you put for a number on the uh uh early payout?
So.
Three months?
I went through this. Oh, no, what's that? So I went through this enhancement, and we got all group by the state, every general, every general. So we request a moron, and we got half a million, and we already had a rating list, which more than exceeded that half million. So what happened, and this is what started the application fee, we have people taking applications out, submitting applications. Then they tied up money while they were trying to decide what they were gonna do for people who needed it. You submit an application, did all the work, and then they say, eh, you know, we're good, we gotta go and distribute to the bank, so we already did all that work for nothing. Even if it's fifty dollars, it might help.
It's a token, yeah.
Yeah, it helps, you know, we process it, it might make someone think twice, I'll just throw it in just because I can. Um so that's the application fee, we charged three seventy five, but whatever. So the early payoff penalty, I sent down the uh treasurer at the time, and we looked at how much interest we would get. In order to just be able to try and break even the amount of work between the town, sending, you know, all the correspondence back and forth to the state. Um you know, sending the payments out to the the contractors and the community and everything else. And it worked out, if it was paid off. From day one.
Yeah.
Till the first year is about three thousand dollars. The second year, two thousand, the third year, one thousand, so that's how we structured it. After the third year, the town more or less broke even. So.
So there is a lot of work in the treasurer's office, you're only looking at the board health, and he said the treasurer has to do a lot of things.
A lot of work.
The accountant does a lot of work, the treasurer and the assessor. Like, all of them are entwined with this application, it's a lot.
I know, we do, we do. Do they have an opinion on it? The assessor, treasurer?
They, their, their payoff is through the interest that's collected on the loan, they can't charge anything extra for it. This is the old board that can, because it processed the application through through the board health, so. I I agree a little with both of you, but I can see that it gets abused in some cases.
Now, now if they sell the house right away, yeah.
So.
So if they sell it within that short timeframe, they should pay an extra dollar, two dollars, whatever.
And to me, it's it's not even.
Not the.
It's it's not even so much regrouping the money, once that money's been taken and gone, it's gone. And I don't, unless we have a different program, the way it's set up, usually once that money gets paid back, it goes back to the state, it doesn't get recycled back to the program. So.
Okay, that you need to be involved in it, huh?
Um so that's why towns have to request more money.
And every, every year or whatever, you have to, yeah, it's not a continuous.
The treasurer checks in with me quarterly, and she wants to know how many applications I've given out, and how many septic parties, and roughly how much they're gonna be looking for, because she wants to make sure she has enough money. So I don't wanna give out two applications, and they reached three hundred thousand, and she, so she's only got a hundred and fifty thousand left for the next one. Even though they haven't submitted the application yet, she's still, so I keep her up to date on what's going on with those, but. As I said, it's a lot.
I've also seen it help out a lot of people who have really needed it, so I think it's a great program.
I agree.
So my question to you is, it seems like a good idea to have a back charge if they sell it within a certain timeframe, how do you collect that?
It's added, it gets right into their.
So that can legally be done? I don't know, I'm asking.
Yeah, they.
Will it be done?
I I'd have to call.
Okay.
Did you, you might have.
It can be put on as a lien if it's not. Basically, what they did is, it's built in, so when they go to pay off that loan, they look up how much time it's been active. And when you pay it off, it's added as. And if part of the, you know, it's a lien through the town, so we're we're first, whatever it is.
I I can see what you're talking about when it comes to the flippers, they do that. But then I also come up with individuals who are, I'll give you an instance, but I'll, any names, you have a woman that just lost her husband. She can't afford the house anymore. She comes to you, I can't even afford the septic, they're saying I have a failed septic, she doesn't know anything about it. Come to find out, yeah, you have a failed septic. Okay, is there anything I can do? Do the, do the betterment, she's ready to walk away from everything. She's li- literally gonna leave, she's gonna sell the house right out of this. She sells it, and you charge her. It's a little different.
A lot of installers, they can build it into the.
Yeah.
The delay payment until going, they just put a lien on the property.
As as an engineer.
What I'm saying, when she sells it, she would pay, once she's, she she has that idea, this person has that idea, sell it right away, she's gonna get charged apparently.
Well, as an engineer, uh at least twenty percent of my work was for people who were in this exact situation, they had no money, but they had equity in their house. So we always worked for payable at the closing, and we would hold off on our money and get paid at the closing, and installers do the same thing, if you, if you know you're doing it quick, you can do that.
So I just look at, so, I know it's fun.
I just see the abuse, and I've worked at three towns that have had this program, and it's been royally abused. And it's not fair to the people that truly need it, who maybe they can't get a bank loan, or whatever the case may be.
The fees can be waived.
Yeah. Right, that's true.
Oh, that's true, you could do.
Someone can always petition the board and say, same with the application fee, you know, some, someone comes, I have no money, I can't afford this application.
They can include it into the betterment loan, fifty dollars.
Absolutely.
That's a good idea, implement the fee, and reserve the right to waive the fee on a per case basis. Good idea.
Well, the process. I'll just, I'll make it, make it where it says.
Now we are, where you are now, or where you were.
It um, the process remains the same here, time's the same, everything's the same, right, I mean, I like those numbers.
It was huge, huge amount of work and time.
Oh, you take, oh, if the property is sold within that, whatever is that, that five hundred dollars fee, it covers everything, I think.
No, because the bank, the town loses out on that interest rate for the three years, I think if you do that, it should be the three years, like that's at three thousand, two thousand.
Less than one year, and um one to two years amount, and two to three years amount.
That makes.
And like I said, there was, there was a huge amount of back and forth, discussion and mathematics when we figured out that tiered system. And how much it was costing the town, and all the work and fees that, you know, we incurred and things like that, and and that's what was the most in line with.
CDBG's been doing this for years with all the homeowner grants for roofs and furnaces and stuff, this is standard stuff, so.
Is that much, a lot, three thousand?
Yeah.
About that?
And lost, and lost interest. Right, well, it's, we, we, I mean, at the time, we put that, you know, we talked to some installers and engineers, we combined the price on, and that was an average septic is what we went with. Some are gonna be less, some are gonna be more, we just go with the average, we figured it to wash. Again, you're getting looking at a work rate that's forty five minutes an inch, or less than two, you meet the middle at twenty, if that's the average.
All right, so what do we think an application fee should be? Fifty? A hundred?
Fifty.
For application fee for a betterment program? Or or zero?
I don't think there should be a fee.
I would say it was fifty. Again, it can be.
So you're looking at a placeholder for the money into the.
Right, I'm looking at, because again, I don't want someone coming in and filling out, out an, out an application. Not really sure, they're just peeling out, you know, oh, I'm gonna put in here to hold the money, I'm gonna go to the banks, you're working in a bit of rain, you know, timeframe.
Or they find a cash buyer for the house, and then they.
Absolutely, meanwhile, now you're tying up the money, and the accountant, treasurer, they already have work involved with this, so.
I just, because I I'm used to doing it different way. The way we, our process works on another town, is we take the application in, if the money's allocated, that means correct, the money's allocated, we send it off to the town attorney. They do all the work, they charge three hundred for the whole.
That's their application fee, we're doing all the work.
But they, but they, but they, they charge the three hundred, and everything is done. But you can tell, but you can know for a fact, the title.
So first, do as much, choose what.
The the title everything's getting checked, we're not, we're not really checking anything.
No, not checking the title, but we have to check the betterment D restriction, we have to check.
And they're putting a lien on that, they're doing everything.
So it's just have to do all that.
So, so, yeah, I think fifty would be a reasonable place, so, I mean, we, what, we had five applications in the last year and a half, it hasn't, it's not like we're getting one a week here, so.
One of those applications, the guy was gonna sell the house.
Yeah, and he admitted that, he was selling house, the house was on the market when he came in looking for a loan, like, are you gonna waste our time doing a loan?
But you're gonna have to rein system.
Yeah, but you're selling.
That's not what this program is designed for.
So it's like, is there a percent interest rate loan is what it is, is the fee, if they flip the house within three months?
I mean, we could, I suppose, which is a little work for a little more. If the person follows through with the application and the loan, we refund their application fee. But then that's more work for somebody, so.
So what do you have, what's?
Would you have three thousand, two thousand?
Well, that was the early payoff, yeah.
And let's just.
I I think that's great.
Yeah, let's just do what, you said fifty for the application?
Yeah.
And what's the early payout?
So early payout.
Three thousand paid off within the first year, zero to one years. Two thousand, I don't know, one to two years, and one thousand, two to three years, and after that, it's.
And that's something, how, what are you gonna, you talked about interim, how's that work, okay?
If someone were to walk into treasurer's private office and say, I wanna pay off this loan. They should look up, I'm gonna have to look up the loan and see how much has been paid off and things like that, they're gonna say, hey, you just took this out six months ago. Now, that fee, it'll all be within the paperwork, like.
So they'll.
It's right on page that we give them, yeah. So when you get the mortgage, you're first, and then the second mortgage, or whatever, you first, whatever, the person that grabs the money first, really, that's called.
Yeah, I I think the way it should work, and has to legally, is the treasurer would need a directive from this board, who vote. That this is what we implemented in order for the subject vendor program to be used in this town. And then she'll have to work the backend stuff on hers, to make sure the paperwork indicates the early payoffs. It should also be disclosed on your application, so.
We have some. Well, you know, we have some work to do to put this all together.
Because then it will help you in a change, to do it that way, because there is full disclosure.
We gotta talk to the treasurer about this, and he says, we.
Yeah, we're not holding on.
If we wanna do this, and the answer is yes, then we can.
That's a good, that's a good, that's a good way to do it.
I just, I just really wanna see a recording for the people that truly need it, for the right reasons, and not a flipper. And again, we can certainly put a thing on there that says, you know, the board health reserves, you know, board health reserves the right to, you know. You can, you can petition the board health for the fee, that way, hey, you know what, someone gets it, and, you know, maybe they did it two and a half years ago, maybe they did it, someone, you know, their husband passed away, or whatever, and. You can afford it, I mean, you can come in and be like, tell us why.
Yes, I know.
If it's a hardship.
They're already having a shirt on, on some of these, I see some of these people already losing their shirt on, and.
Everybody's waiting.
And then they're gonna have to pay a penalty too. I'm talking about those specific, isn't it? Not the flippers.
If it's a hardship, I have a problem with it.
There are people that have hardship for this reason.
Come in front of us and tell us why.
Everyone that comes to me mostly has this, this issue.
Right.
There are a few I can see too that, because we ask for, we ask for total input. There are a few I can see too that, because we ask for, we ask for total info. And sometimes you're like, oh, yeah, and you're like, oh, man, right? Then there's some you're like, oh, wow, right?
I wanna make sure that the money's available for the ones that.
True. We gotta be discussing this further in another meeting anyway, so we can kick it around and give some language. So I threw the next one in here, the extension on the disposal work, I don't know if the board wants to do this or not, but a disposal work application is good for three years. Um, do we wanna allow them to extend it, and is there gonna be a fee to extend it, and do we want just a one year max, or up to three years, or, you know, just, just thought for discussion?
I wouldn't extend it.
You wouldn't extend it? Kevin?
But I have not three years.
It's good for three years, yeah.
Well, we're not only adding, we re-stamped it, just to make sure.
The end hearing, right?
Yeah, to make sure nothing's changed.
And, but then you, you hit them with a, it's a new application and a new three years, or do you just extend it?
Uh, I do like, whatever it was, like the seven five, just to make sure, re-stamped it. Because things have changed, I've seen where somebody puts a well there, and now they're trying to pull the permit.
Or the rights changed, yeah.
Yeah, and I said, oh no, this, this is expired, um, have, go back to the engineer, have the, go through this whole thing, make sure, make sure everything's, um, correct.
So you're basically re-upping them for another three years is what you're doing.
Well, we, again, we do it for a yearly.
Well, he does it twelve months.
I do it twelve.
Oh, you're on to a three year permit?
In our regs, they say three, uh, one year. So new construction, three years, a repair, one year.
Because I will say, going to the files, we have a lot of plans that were approved and then.
Yeah, new construction we do for three years, even when we approve, we say, uh, three years, and if it's a well, yeah, the well has to be there the other year. And then for repairs, it's one year. And when they come back to us, we just ask them, uh, this is expired, go back to the engineer, re-stamp this, make sure everything is correct, because your, your neighbor could have put in a well or set it. We're not gonna do that, we're gonna make sure, uh, he's certifying that it's correct.
So we wanna stick with three years here, or do you think you wanna implement the one year thing, I think the three year is.
On the three year, I don't think we need to extend it, but I like the one year thing, on a repair, you can extend it for a year for. This way you get rid of the stuff in that file, because a lot of times they, they approve a plan, and they have one year to do it, or you have them sitting there forever.
No, and I, and we have that, I get it, but.
A new construction, things happen, we give them three years.
No, no, I get it, I, I hear you. Now, subject affairs aren't usually the ones getting extended, usually they're, they're the ones that either they don't do it at all, or they do it right away. So.
I would follow to a five, then. We got that.
Alright, Mr. Chairman, what are we doing?
Alright, no repairs.
No repairs?
I mean, no, what else?
No extensions. We're gonna stick to three years for new and repair.
Yep.
We can adjust it if need be, but say, usually they just come right away.
I mean, it would have to be an extraordinary circumstance, I think.
Again, anyone, one month, on the board and say, hey, it's three years and one month, the thing I don't wanna put four hundred dollars in, it's ridiculous.
Yep.
Hey, you know what, three years and one month?
Yeah.
You have a lien?
Six years? Yeah, no, no.
Debugged repair, a hundred dollars, I know we talked about the.
We talked about.
Disposal permits for the single components, so that's already been covered. I don't know what board health action is.
That's like what you do another day, when you're just going.
Um, which we already covered.
So it'd be a component, right?
Same thing with successful abandonment, would that be a single component?
Yeah, we can, uh, under the, the, we put component, um, on the list, use for abandonment, or system abandonment.
System or a well?
Yeah.
Just add it to the component list.
Groundwater application test, well, we already did, we inspection fee, we already did. Demolition, this is the, must be the letters we write for the building department as part of the demo, but usually we do one of those letters for, so I'm getting this one around.
Yes, most of the time, I do, I do place a lien on the property, so if you want to implement a fee, you can send me a letter indicating the fee, and I can include that on the lien that gets placed, so eventually you get the money.
Well, that's an inspection, it's time to evaluate the property.
Yeah. I'm fine with that, if you wanna couple the number, and that number gets attached to my cost of demolition, eventually you'll see the check.
I agree.
Yes, a, a site inspection, and then a letter, so yeah, a hundred, a hundred twenty bucks, and around that range, you're probably about to do it.
I like a hundred.
Anybody else, a hundred?
A hundred sounds good.
So that's just for those specific cases.
Demolitions, right, yeah, because I, I do need a letter in order to follow the condition.
The old post office, that's.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Alright, variance hearing requests, we've kicked this around for the one that needs to notify the abutters, and we have to have a public hearing, um, and then we're granting a variance, should there be a fee for that? This isn't just the waivers for separation of water table and distance to foundation, this is a variance where they're going too close to a well, under somebody's well, or something, that's a little, it takes more time, it takes time in a meeting, so. Shouldn't there be a fee?
It's a little extra time, I have to make sure that they're all getting tuned into your, your twenty-five dollars.
You know, they're all there, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it, it's, it's one of those things, sometimes they ask for variance when it's like, we could have just moved it over a little bit or whatever, and so that's why sometimes the variance fee keeps the engineers to finding a way to do it without variance.
Twenty-five or fifty, just to cover some of the office payoff or something like that, scheduling that, and getting all the paper together.
You okay with that, Kevin, or?
Uh, fifty, fifty, fifty.
Uh, yeah. At the time I wrote this, I was having a lot of times, I was showing up and there was no machine or no engineer, and they were getting the engineer, and he said, you know, I'm gonna charge seventy-five dollars to be in length, it's like, that's not in your fee schedule, you can't charge me. It's like, alright, then dig an extra hole. So, um, but, yeah, I just, it was a little annoying to get out there and not find anybody there, when they said we're starting at eight and I show up at nine and there's nobody there, so.
I guess it's just like, if there's no one, if no one's there within that one hour, then you can't.
And they have to pay the whole fee again. That's what I've done.
So.
No shows, you're paying again, you know, you wasted, it could be a half, it could be a whole day for me, and I blocked out for that, now that's shop for other things that I could have been doing that gotten done, it's not just a inconvenience.
Actually, I, I would actually be rough on you that.
Yeah.
If you have a perk test scheduled at a specific time, and I get there, and it's not ready for me, I'd say call it off, it's done, it's over. Today's day and age, with telephones, emails, and everything else, there's no reason for you to not call the board health and say, I'm having a problem, can you just give me another thirty minutes? There's no reason, so to me, that's a blatant smack in the face of a town official to not be ready when I'm there. If you call me for inspection, and I get there and it's not ready, I turn around and leave you. Because you had the other time you told me it wasn't ready.
I've had a couple where I've, I've gotten out there, and the engineer's there, the machine's not, and when I'm pulling up, the contractor's on the phone, the engineer, you know, I just blew a tire, you know, I. I get it, that.
There are, there are reasons, again, within reasons.
But, you're gonna know it's not, I'm sitting there waiting and out, gee, where is everybody, oh gee, you know, the engineer's, well, where's the machine, oh, where's the engineer, gee, I don't know. And then you can't get a hold of them, and that's, there's no excuse for any of that.
So just not there within an hour, the canceled new fee, and we skip.
I think even quite the deal, like Jim said, your time is, you block that out.
What do you do for that out?
Wait, why do you wait now?
Sometimes.
And he pulls in, yeah, that's crazy.
In the meantime, there's stuff to do in the office, I got questions, giving it all around.
Well, like, if the engineer, well, if the engineer is there and the machine isn't, I'll usually end up chatting with the engineer.
Well, then that can be a distraction, that can be a distraction.
Well, I could get your discretion, discretion, I mean, if you get there and nobody's there.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I, I don't even shut up the car.
It's only happened, it's only happened to me once, where the.
So maybe it shouldn't be if not, if not.
Totally forgotten, but we just canceled, we just left it.
How should it be long?
Trying to show up with the truck there.
It's, it's under your discretion, Todd, I mean, you know, you've been on the other side, so you.
Well, so what happened to me is the one engineer that didn't show up, and he was like an hour and a half late, I said to him, hit me with a seventy-five dollar late fee, he goes, it's not in your fee schedule, you can't do that. And that's why I said, I want you to dig two extra holes, so it'll be a hundred and fifty dollars, and the client said, oh, wait, 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 we're okay paying the late fee, so.
You have discretion, don't do. Because that's happened a few times, you've gotten out there.
I think it should, it definitely, I mean, you, you understand, but.
Yeah, I, I think I'm generally reasonable, so the ones that like, say, it's like.
Lately, just.
You kill me, and they drive, you know, fifteen minutes from the office, but, you know, and there's other things to do.
Yeah, I mean, they don't make me cell phone, they send me an email, we all have smart devices now, there's no reason why you won't get an application. And the person.
If at least there's one, one of the other, I mean, if neither of them are there, absolutely, you know, turn right around, that's it, I mean, if one of them is there, you know, obviously they're wondering what's going on too, one way or the other. So, you know, hey, maybe it's, you know, I got stuck behind a school bus, I blew a tire, chain popped off the machine, and it's.
Well, question, that's, and then they don't drive out there, so you didn't waste my time, it's driving, it's a waste.
Well, you can try to work that better way, they said, if they're not present at the time of the perk, uh, they may be, they may be canceled and the, um, and fees may be reassessed, whatever.
What time do you schedule your perks for all the issues?
Whatever time the engineer says they're gonna get there.
Early in the eight o'clock?
Yeah, this morning, seven. So he said seven o'clock, and I showed up at seven thirty, so I give him a half an hour to get off, the, the, you know, untie everything, and get, and they have the engineer figure it out, so I'm there while they're digging. I showed up at seven thirty-four, and the machine was just getting off the trailer, so.
I think if you have to wait for one of them, if one, one of them's there, you gotta wait for one, they should be charged, yeah, if nobody's there, yeah, I, I agree with that.
Yeah, well, then, I mean, things happen, and.
Yeah, so I just wanted to have something that I could, you know, have some teeth to, to not waste my time. If they, it's in there, then they'll get those calls, that engineer never even called me, he just assumed he was gonna show up at nine thirty, and I was there at eight or whatever, and I was like, dude, you told me.
He read our regs to know what was done, so he wasn't hurt.
Yep. So, anyhow, we can, uh, we can rework something.
Yeah, we'll, we'll save, yeah.
Water health fee, inspection fee, we already did, we last time review, we did a title five.
Yeah, we didn't make a fee for that again, we did, we stamped a title five fee.
Right now it's fifty dollars to review the title five, we do not have a title five license fee yet, so twenty-five. Twenty-five, okay.
Could make it five hundred, Jim. We have an angry mob coming in here.
I think we will, one.
Neil will get it anyway, nobody else will get it.
Operating of permits, uh, we have, on the other one, the first asterisk, we have double the fee for operating without a proper license slash permit, plus fees. We recently have one, the installer installed a tank in a pump chamber without a permit, didn't even have a proof plan, you know, they didn't even have a point, we, you know, it's like, what are you doing? So, um, is that just double the fee, sticking to that?
Then we get traction to their installing license. You know, they continue, basically assist on, on the job, so.
Okay.
Yeah, they'll have to get that license, and the double fee.
So double license fee, and, or.
No, 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 they'll have to get the license, their license is double fee, right?
Yep.
And obviously, if something in their file, we are an innovative letter, but it's not gonna ever happen again, or there won't be licenses now. That's what I believe.
And we have, the board has, with how licenses perform, will be bad problems, it gets people's attention, so.
So then we move on to small amount of fees.
Hey, you're picking this up, this discharge fee's down the road for a while, but now we can't do it anymore.
Yeah, but are we ready to do it right now?
I think we should at least have a little short discussion on it. So the stormwater committee, do you want us to say?
All right, yeah, I think it is.
So the stormwater committee has been working vigorously to get things up to the year two thousand nineteen when it comes to stormwater, we're, we're making a lot of progress, but. As you know, what you've done, because this board, um, you basically have to redo everything, so, or create things, so. We're looking for two, the input from this board, two fee schedules, um, permit application fee, and then the illicit discharge fee. So, most of the illicit discharges are gonna be for residential uses, so, you know, we, we will all overplace with this, because you wanna make it a fee that's strong enough that sends a message. But then again, some of what can be done by a resident is either, you know, intentional or malicious, it could go either way. So, we just, we just wanted your input on it. The permit fee, um, we, we handed out the commercial stuff, didn't we, Todd, so this was just for residential?
Four hundred dollars per acre, or whatever, we didn't work that one.
So the residential fee was, again, we wanted your input, because we didn't wanna get a fee schedule that made it a deterrent, we don't want people not to commit to get the permit. Because we wanna make this a positive venture for everybody involved, so we have some control over where the stormwater's going. Um, so this may be one of those cases where we can look the fee that really doesn't come with the cost, just to make sure that we have the people getting the permits, so. I, we just know how you feel about that, because we have some community in this board, so.
Like, for example, the solar, you know, the ground running solar, it's like four hundred dollars an acre, is what we, we charge for subdivision, like a hundred and fifty per lot, or something like that, is what we came up with, so. Does the fee mark out of line or anything like that, it was the illicit discharge, and we kind of got held up on how do we.
Right.
I think the parade for whatever, the, the, that's, that's good.
We're doing our, we're, we're, you go out there and talk to people, it's like a warning, right?
Yeah, we, we can be as different about it as we can, you know, and most, we, it, we've been pretty effective, you know, we haven't really come to the point where we need to, anybody will find or fee, but. There are cases when that will happen, so we just wanted to have it in the books, so we could use it. Um, but yeah, to answer your question, we've had good success talking about.
Very good success, I would say, yeah.
Well, I kind of, well, my feeling is we should do a warning or a letter first, anyway. Yeah, advise them of my regulations, and see how, give them seven days or whatever.
We could say first offense is a warning, second offense is, or, I guess it's not a second offense, right?
Well, no, if you, first offenses are warning, but unlawful continuance within the letter.
That's a good word.
Yeah, then, then.
I'll find it earlier, at a hundred, a lot of the finds are at a hundred.
Right, but maybe, I mean, we're just looking at compliance, a lot of them, so maybe an option would be the second offense is coming to see the board.
You actually brought that.
Yeah.
For meeting, months ago, what do you charge? If somebody had, if that's creating a nuisance, we, we, we try to work with the individual the whole time, see if they, how they're gonna take care of it, or ultimately, uh, charge a hundred dollars.
I would, I would say unlawful continuance will be charged at a hundred dollars per day, and a hearing in front of the board, at which point, if we feel, you know what, maybe it went on, you racked up a thousand dollars because you let it go on for ten days. You want, you have planning correction, it's all correct, if we can save a hundred dollars instead of a thousand, and we, we serve that right, I believe.
Okay, that's good, so instead of teed behind it?
Yeah, that way it's not like, sorry, yeah, I got a hearing in front of the board, alright, yeah, it'll be in two weeks, meanwhile, I'm just gonna keep up, you know what, let's.
Alright, I like that idea.
Well, if they call me and say, hey, I wanna be on the next meeting, and the next meeting's not for thirteen days, then it's, you know.
But you're, you're working with them, how are you gonna fix it?
As long as you're working with them, then you're reasonably.
How are you gonna fix this, what's going on, why?
But that's what we've done with the help.
We'd say up to a hundred dollars per day, and scheduled, or a scheduled hearing with the board.
At the next available meeting.
At the next available meeting, and up to a hundred dollars a day, that way it's not, that way it leaves some discretion, that way if they're working with you, you can say, okay, well.
So nobody's come to the point where even a warning had to be issued, so, I think this is just gonna be more of a deterrent in our back pocket if we need it, we've been very successful.
Did you ever come across any situations that, um, they had no choice, went to direct it to the road, and most of the properties are big, and people to discharge to another area.
There's always an option, yeah. It's just the easiest option is to put it in the street. After all, when it rains, it goes somewhere, right?
Well, that's right.
Alright, we already have the permit application fees, we found those, so we can get with.
Presidential, well, do we have a presidential?
Yeah, it was a hundred and fifty, I think, for a lot.
Was it?
Cause that included, you know, a planned doing an open hole inspection.
What about the existing, what about the existing?
They could only, forget what we were on that, it was like seventy five, maybe a hundred, it was a low amount for any listing card to do stuff. But we already have that these schedules, we can add it into this one, to the, to the next meeting.
Okay, I just have one other thing about the, uh, reinspection fees, I'm not sure what your process is now for reinspection fees. But I will not go back out of real inspection until I receive the reinspection fee. So if you don't have that second policy, you might want to implement that.
Gets hard with the bottom hole and the contractor wants to get it filled in right away, the homeowner's paying the bill, but we can hold back our COC is what we usually do in total meetings.
Okay, as long as you have a record, it's okay.
Get to the, get to the way that's on that.
All right.
Just like the food, we'll defer it back until it's paid for following year.
I just look at it differently, if you wasted my time, I went out there, I, you weren't ready, or you, I'm not ready, but you didn't do something properly. Now what it means to you to come down to the office, pay the fee, and then I'll go back out, so. You know, I don't want everybody home to think I have adverse relationship with everyone, it's just that time is valuable, your time's valuable, my time is valuable. Call me when you're ready.
We're all set with that, man. Uh, animal control fees, so, if you hear what's on there, just, you know, pass on that, um.
Our fee town, Dyken trash bags. So, uh, Roz and I have been putting this together, we actually found it off of Mallory's. She did it.
I don't know how I did it, the copy of this, like, I might as well. So, as you remember, we have a really tough time with the bags, not from this vendor, from the previous vendor. So we tried to incorporate some of those specifications into this.
And we, right currently, we don't need that actually right now, so we don't need to finish this tonight, we can, we can wait if we need to, so. We still have to move, see, that, that was the big thing, was the seams, so. And you'll see on page two, we asked them to bring samples in as part of their, uh, application, so.
And again, we're not under the gun with these, we still.
But the ties requests is.
So right now the ties on the small bag are eight inch ties, and the large bag is a four inch tie.
Which is totally how that happened, but that's all, yeah, for you. But at least if we've got it in there, I may do that, cause we asked them to send us extra ties now because they were wrong and they've pretty much not, so.
So we, again, Mallory's got a way in on this too, so, um.
And this is good, that might be his concern was the seams in front of that, so.
And then, like, very bottom, it says something about the water health, uh, lowest responsive, responsive.
Responsible.
Responsible bidder, and so.
We've had our issues in the past with other companies and we know who they are, we can certainly put a bid in if their product has changed, but.
And so we ask for references, so we can check references, so it, this is, a lot of language, Kieran Monoff, the service, is directed us to put into this, so. Although she did text me right before our meeting, she has a few things she wants to tweak on, so.
I think you've already, I think that's.
I think, hey, I like it.
Don't compare it to the last one, well, we're learning, this is now our third RFP in the span of like a month here, so.
Yeah, it's good.
But Mallory does have some, um, things she wants to incorporate, so we need to take with us, so the next.
And take over the, any, any comments.
Lock it up, or?
Obviously, we don't have dates put in there yet, cause we're waiting for everybody to say we're ready, so.
Mr. Chair, a great motion to table the RFP for the pieces to retract that until the next meeting, and we know everybody else is.
Okay. Okay, motion made, so, uh, seconded for discussion, uh, I just wanted to talk about the insert first for a minute. We wanted that insert, right, that goes in there.
We did change.
We changed it a little bit, right?
And actually, the insert probably, your, um, recommendations are edits, cause this is really busy, I don't know that people are going to.
There's a lot there.
Yeah, so this would be what's printed on the bag.
Yeah.
And then, this would be just the, yeah.
Yep, per role.
But it's still a lot, it's basically telling people how to recycle.
Yeah, we don't think people are gonna read all that if that's there, so. So that's why we felt that we need to.
Should we, no, but should we?
You should recycle it.
I brought one, you want, I wanted a copy of one.
Oh, thanks.
But I couldn't get it on Word.
Oh.
So there's much less there, but, yeah.
You can just see versus online, I didn't, I didn't look at it, I just grabbed it.
So again, we only put this together today and I was like, this is too much, we need to thin it out, we added some curb side textile and transfer station, but I think we can, I think it needs to be thinned down, so.
Well, I, we had changes, um, a few months back. I found out from the contractor, yeah, I know we added some stuff, so long as they know they have to be timed outside by seven and in the bags. That's what we added, I think, to the last one, there is a lot there, I think, so.
So maybe we just say, you know, there's, you know, recycling options available, you know, look at the water health website or whatever, maybe something much else, so.
Well, hopefully, we'll be coming out with our recycling, um, mailer.
The IQ, yeah.
Yeah, so and so, but, yeah, it would be, you know.
I don't think anybody's gonna raise.
But the thing is, though, if it's there, and when they get the bags, you get, if, just say, water side problem, somebody put all kinds of other stuff in there, you could say, hey, you've got your bag. It has everything on there, huh? You know you're not supposed to put that stuff in. It's pretty, I pretty much said, I think, what you, you said.
Yeah. We could probably reduce the curb side textile, you could say, curb side textile was something available at no cost to the residents. Please contact the water health for more information, something like that, that would free up a few lines.
Okay.
I love how we're in the head, but, you know. Reduces some clarity.
Again, take it, study it, look at all those, if you got any comments, hang it on your fridge.
I wouldn't probably take that, so I think that'd be bad, and fall out there, that they are receiving on that, so.
Oh, and just while we're on topic, and it's not even before, but we did get somebody that came in just for something, and I said, hey, by the way, we didn't think bad. It's like, yeah, we got, the wife swore to it, she didn't know what it was. He came with a plaque and he's like, yeah, I shouldn't look at it, so what is it, and I told him what is it, he's like, oh, that's great, I'll take it back, so. It's about information, so.
I've seen a lot of people, good and bad, and, uh, I know there's some concern over, well, it's a for-profit company here, whatnot, I, I understand that. More welcome to use, you know, to donate self, Salvation Army, C-List, the Paul, other organizations, the problem is, they can only, they only can make the money off what they can resell. And this program accepts even completely soiled rags and, I mean, things that.
No soul, yeah.
Right, and things that actually cannot be, um, you know, resold or reused or things like that, with the exception of completely destroying the product and using it for insulation and whatnot, and that's what this company does, so. They do more to keep things out of the trash or waste stream, um, than, you know, and, and I understand it's not, it is a for-profit company, but it's not costing the town anything, we actually get some money for it. It's a convenience, you don't have to drive anywhere, try to find a bin, um, and you can dispose of things that a lot of other facility companies will not pay, so.
And the program is not, not meant to replace goodwill.
Right.
It's meant to supplement it, so.
Okay, there was a motion to table the RFP town dump trash bags, uh, it was seconded, on favor.
Aye.
Close.
So in our evolution of our RFPs, we decided to do another one. This one is for the Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day, which we recently did get the vote at special town meeting for the additional monies. And so, um, we put together the RFP, same thing as the other one, there's a lot of language in here that's similar, some of this was from the last RFP, we didn't come up with all of it ourselves, but, um.
And again, I think Mallory's gonna tweet this also.
I know she's gonna tweet.
Like prior when we sent these out, it was basically just, um, giving them a date and then they sent back what they were quoting. And I would put a spreadsheet together, and so now this big form, basically, they're all gonna be the same format, it should be a much better.
That's better, I like it.
That, you say, that's a change, but she's telling you.
So Mallory is not.
She is not, no, I dropped it out yesterday, I think, so now, so we'll be getting comments where it's the same thing, take it home and.
I like that it's presented, but, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to table the RFP for that, um, THW day until we receive everybody's comment.
A motion is made, seconded, table, I don't, I see, THW daily, uh, on favor.
Aye.
Should we discuss it, what's going on, I agree, we should discuss this, what we wanna do.
Todd, we have, Todd actually got through to, um, didn't go with the animal hospital, while I was out, and it is scheduled for April twenty seventh, we do have to fly over to.
April twenty seventh?
April twenty seventh.
Saturday, I know, so.
Cause all dogs have to be licensed by the end of April. So, um, it has, the, the day has to be enabled for this.
So you'll be able to license your dog?
Yeah, it's still on there. That's where they are.
Forty-two. Forty-two. Two, three, two.
Two, three, and it's fifteen dollars.
Yeah, we get the licensing, we get the chip in.
No chip in.
No chip in your share, you didn't buy that.
Actually, let me do the flyer.
No chip in the share, just the rabies and licensing dogs, the town clerk will be there so that you can license your dogs. The town clerk only takes checks and the rabies clinic only takes cash.
Bring both.
Bring both.
No credit cards.
Are we gonna read it now? Say it, tell them, I say, you tell them.
All right.
You.
Um, I sent everybody, uh, this, do you remember the title five inspection that we had that was not very good? Um, uh, we sent them a letter saying it wasn't very good, made the changes, his response was inadequate, and so, is my opinion, so, um, I got this letter, sent to DP. I called DP and said, hey, who do I send this letter to, is it to Lakeville or is it to Bossman? And I actually had Brett, which I'm assuming is Brett Robb, call me, and I explained the situation to him, he's like, well, once a month we meet or whatever, and he kind of was a little like, eh. And I said, look, his inspection report, it looked like he didn't open the tank, opened the D box, opened the pump shed, he's like, what? I'm like, yeah, I was, he's like, send in the report. I said, okay. So I wrote this letter and, um, if everybody's okay with it, um, I'd like to send it out, and if it changes, feel free to shout it out.
And he didn't send another report, right?
He sent in one page.
Did that, that's his response, right?
Yep, the DP, whatever, he's been very responsive.
He'd sent in one page from the two thousand sixteen report form, we asked him to fill it in on the current form, and basically, his effect was, all you can do is take the report, it's not up to you to look at it, so. So we'll see what DP wants to do, if the board's okay, we're gonna be sending this.
I, I'm sorry. You might be surprised, I might be.
So.
If things are.
For all.
I think that's active.
So moved.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Number six authorized expenditure payroll and bills.
All right, so we have a bill from Weston in Sampson here for the landfill honoring, which is one of the RFPs, it's just gone out because this is the last one of their three-year term. Uh, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars, we have payroll, uh, for two weeks, thirty-six hundred dollars, and that's it. All set?
We're onto inspectors' reports, uh, she's not, uh, basically she was not with us, so we'll want to have that type of report, and then.
Okay, good. I'll, I'll go after you.
Um, yeah, as far as I know, the animal control officers did not have anything, um, urgent to be discussed with the board tonight, so there was nothing there. Uh, I only had, we've already covered most of it, the only thing I have going on, and this is kind of my probably plan to where he's going, we have a restaurant in town that, um, the owner is currently staying as the owner, but a new person is going to be leasing the property, and it's a restaurant, and it's gonna become a new restaurant. And the question is, um, what do they need to do, uh, what permits do they need from us, when do they get all those, obviously, they're gonna need a permit from us to open, and we have to go in and do inspection, but how far do we go with bringing them up to current codes? Because they're not changing ownership, they are changing, um, franchise, and obviously, the building inspectors have been involved, cause they're also pulling permits from the building department for doing some upgrades inside, if.
There's been no definitive scope of work, which is the problem I'm having to determine what needs to be done in order to not reoccupy the space. Um, I'm meeting with the contractor tomorrow to hopefully nail down a scope of work, so we'll have a more, um, in-depth understanding as to what they wanna do. I actually think based on discussions with the property owners, who I think are great people, uh, I think it's a moving target, I really don't know that they have, they know exactly what they wanna do. So, um, we're trying to work with them, but by the same token, we have responsibilities, and there are gonna be some pro traders, um, regardless of that.
Like, what, like flow, what are they thinking?
So.
But how many, how many, uh, seats were they, uh, virgin?
I think it was in the eighty range.
Yeah.
What's it just?
And then, but the seats have never been removed, so I don't know what's going back, so I, I haven't seen anything. I gave them the nod to go ahead and clean the place up, but there's been no permits issued to reestablish.
So my, my suggestion would be two things, one, in regards to the septic and the flow, they cannot exceed what was already existing, obviously, without a thing to say. They can go less, they just cannot go more, and I'm sure we have some record of what was existing.
My certificate was issued annually, so.
Correct, so they can't exceed what was existing.
Understood.
Um, and seeing that they are doing some work, it's a new owner, they, with their application for the food, uh, they should be submitting a new, um, floor plan for not just, since the, the way we moved the seats, it's, it's obviously changing, they're gonna have to have a new floor plan for seating. And also for the kitchen, include in that, you know, while the equipment's gonna be, you know, watching crap saying to be basic, coolers, prep areas, all like that, that should be standard with it, um, and then. Whatever, whatever food they're gonna be serving to them, obviously, if they're, if it's gonna be crazy hazardous, they're gonna be asking, and I don't foresee, from what I've heard, that it's gonna be like that, but. At a minimum, I think that, that's reasonable to be similar with food.
Do you know if they're gonna touch the kitchen?
I can't get it straight.
The new food code says that you have to have a designated mop sink now. Especially now, so you gotta have a hand sink, the three base sink with the dishwasher, now you have to have an area, you can't be using the toilet, and you can't be dumping outside.
Are you saying mop sink, M O P?
Mop.
Some kind of, yeah, mop sink or slop sink.
It's called a slop mop or service sink.
Some kind of sink that, uh, for that reason.
Yeah, so I'm hoping to get some better answers tomorrow, uh, again, I allow them to get started down there, I, I don't want all the progress, but by the same token, we need to have the proper permits in place, um, so. I'm hoping to have a healthy perception of the contract tomorrow.
So if we get some better direction, I would, I'd be looking for assistance and guiding them for where they need to go, so.
Make it as streamlined and easy as possible.
So that's part, I need some advice from the board, we have a new request in, I've been doing this for a long time, this is the first time I've heard, uh, the following. I have someone who came in who wants to. I have someone who came in who wants to construct a barn above, to house animals. Um, I think specifically on the table right now is horses. However, they wanna construct an apartment above the area where the animals are. So from a building code perspective, I have no problem with a garage being built and an apartment above, and now we are going to inject potential farm animals below a dwelling unit. I checked with Stacy, she tells me that, to her knowledge, there's nothing that would prohibit that. I have some concerns with that for multiple reasons. Um, animals emit gases, fumes, some of those can be toxic. And now I'm being asked to put a dwelling unit above it. We also all know that most farms attract rodents and bird. So are we creating a situation that might potentially become a violation to their housing standards? I don't know. Well, I really need some advice.
I don't know.
I can't come up with one scenario where I've seen this before, or even heard of it.
I think the point you brought up, Mallory, when it comes to the housing. So they wanna have their, it looks like a garage, like a barn.
A farmhouse.
Elsie. I think we could talk to Elsie.
I, I have not, I called a few building officials, no one's ever.
I've never, I've never, you know?
Not living quarters.
What's your title of action?
Am I Elsie, I see.
Um.
But it's all, would it be all under one structure?
All one structure.
And, uh.
I would say no, my.
Yeah, but then, then the house would be, then it would be unpacked, the building would be unpacked, uh, would be, uh, on sanitary area to fit, fits one structure. Now you have a newer on the ground.
Well, that's.
If you have it separate, so if you're, if you're dwelling, you can't have feces on the ground.
Oh, so you're saying dwelling unit consists of the.
The whole building, yeah. So your dwelling unit can't consider, can't have feces on the ground.
So my building code doesn't have any language of it like that, but, but that makes sense. I knew there had to be something in the whole house.
If it's the whole house, I'm just trying to think, but if, obviously, that's why they keep it separate, so you can maintain that unit with the animals, but your own unit is packed. And I would say no, if I was, if we had to sign off, my vote would be no.
Well, you ought to sign off.
Yeah, my vote, my vote wouldn't be no on that, just because they're creating a condition in their own home, when they didn't have to, there's no hardship for that.
I would, I would see prior application from the state. You can reach out to Elsie.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, I, I have nothing further, if you're sure you want to.
But Elsie would probably, you know, Elsie, right?
I have those, yes.
I have nothing further, I'm ready.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion for food in minutes of parts twenty-seven. Some more.
Second.
Motion is made, second, all favor. Aye. Close. Motion carries.
All right.
Congratulations.
But I would do it if I had to, I would have to sign that one. I mean, with the papers?
Yep, and with the, um, the bulky item.
Oh, okay.
Just share it?
And I put the textiles on that.
Yeah, we don't.
So you didn't get.
All right. Does it drop? Doesn't. All right, bulky items, curbside pickup. Board of Health has scheduled its annual bulky item pickup during the week of May twentieth, two thousand nineteen, to May twenty-fourth. Uh, it will be following the same schedule as trash pickup, bulky items must be out from later than seven o'clock AM. We have a list here of items that may be placed for curbside pickup and disposal, uh, and their associated prices. Air conditioner, fifteen dollars, barbecue grill, ten dollars, box spring, fifteen dollars, computer monitor, ten dollars. Desk or tables, ten dollars, dishwasher, fifteen dollars, dryers, fifteen dollars, bio cabinet, ten dollars. Love seat recliner, ten dollars, mattress, fifteen dollars, microwave, ten dollars, propane tank, ten dollars, refrigerator, fifteen dollars. Sectional, uh, couch, twenty dollars, regular sofa, couch is fifteen dollars, stove is fifteen dollars, television is twenty dollars. Uh, car tire is five dollars for each tire, truck tire is ten dollars for each tire, larger tractor tire is fifteen dollars for each tire. Washing machine, fifteen dollars, water heater, fifteen dollars, VCR, ten dollars. Uh, and a reminder that all refrigerator doors must be removed. Um, the tags may be purchased at the Board of Health office, Giltown Hall, lower level, one-one, one-one, some said that. A separate tag is required for each item that is to be disposed, uh, the tag must be affixed to each item intended for disposal. Any questions, you can contact the Board of Health at seven-seven-four-eight-seven-two-zero-nine-four-three. And in case anyone hasn't gotten, uh, the mail-in with the pink curbside textile recycling bag, um, again, this program, uh, is no cost to the Town Dyke or residents. Um, the program collects a wide variety of materials, including, uh, all clothing, including vent wings, children's coats, jackets, shoes, jewelry, purses, hats, toys, pictures, mirrors, blankets, pillows, sleeping bags, drapes, curtains, tools, silverware, dishes, pots, pants, glasses, backpacks, uh, and more. It does not matter the condition, uh, and the pink bags are to be placed out, um, for the same day as regular trash pickup. And lastly, Rabies Vaccination Day will be held Saturday, April twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen, from two o'clock to three o'clock PM at the North Dyke Fire Station located at one thirty-two J Street. The cost is fifteen dollars per immunization, and that's cash only. Um, and the town clerk will also be available to issue dog licenses, and dog licenses can only be paid via the check. Uh, pet supplies and food drive, if you have any pet food, bedding, leashes, blankets, or toys that are new or gently used, that you would like to donate, please bring it fine, and we'll make sure that it is used at the town shelter or distributed to those in need, and, um, this is, uh, gonna be held by, uh, in cooperation with Dr. Bruce in Dyke Road with Animal Hospital. So if you have any other information, or want to know any other information, please call the Dyke Board of Health at seven-seven-four-eight-seven-two-zero-nine-four-three. And just as a reminder, all cats must be in a carrier, only one cat per carrier, all dogs must be leashed, aggressive dogs must be muzzled, one handler per dog. All animal owners are responsible for cleanup in the event their animal, um, creates a mess or nuisance within or on the grounds immediately adjacent to the fire station. And immunization will be denied to animals whose owners refuse to clean up messes made by their owners.
Very good, thank you. Before we do, anybody else?
Thanks.
Hold on. Yeah, then, it's staying motion for, yeah.
Some.
Okay. Second, all favor. I have it, close. Now, everybody, thank you, thank you for coming.